Let us pray. Father, we have you once again. We thank you for putting your arms around and bring us together. Praise you to give us wisdom to take care of the business for the city of Jacksonville and its residents. In the name of Jesus, we ask you to pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Joining in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the City of Jacksonville City Council Meeting, June 5th, 6:00 PM. If you would, everybody, please grab your mics, pull them down in front of you so that everybody who is watching virtually can hear. We'll go ahead and get started with roll call, please.
Councilmember Deeds.
Here.
Rupel.
Here.
Siri. McCoy.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
LeBron.
Here.
Moss.
Here.
Twitty.
Here.
Kenman.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
One absent, sir.
All right, we are good to go with the quorum. Before you, you have the minutes from our May 22nd meeting. You may be reviewing those for our next meeting for approval, but at this time entertain a motion to accept our minutes from the May 1st meeting as presented to you.
Omo.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting those minutes, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, my name. Thank you very much. Consent agenda, you had that. Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented to you.
Omo.
We did receive the corrected investment sheet for that, so thank you for that.
So we have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and second. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, my name. All right, thank you. Moving down to ordinance 1789. Amending, modifying Jacksonville Municipal Code 2.44.010. Entertaining a motion to place ordinance 1789 on first reading.
Omo.
Have motion and second. There are multiple firsts, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
Ordinance number 1789, an ordinance to amend and modify Jacksonville Municipal Code 244.
All right, any questions, discussions about the amendment for this ordinance? The amendment of the policy procedures, this ordinance, 1789. If not, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1789 on first reading and suspend the rules in place on second reading.
Omo.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1789 on second reading and suspend the rules in place on third and final reading.
Omo.
Motion.
Second.
And second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
All right, and entertain a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 1789 on this date.
Omo.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
All right, and then finally entertain a motion to attach the emergency clause.
Omo.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCoy.
Nate.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. That's all for ordinance 1789. Next, moving on to Nixon Farm Drainage Easements, Infrastructure and Community Support Proposal. Dana Nixon, Councilmember McCoy.
Yeah, thank you so much. Ms. Nixon, you are recognized. I think we all have that in our packets and may have read through it, but thank you, Mrs. Nixon, for being here today.
Good to see everyone. Last time I was here, I talked to you all about what we wanted to do with the farm and agritourism. And I want to continue to develop that. My first thing I would like to do and get the support from the city is for Jacksonville to come into the fold like Little Rock and North Little Rock and do some sort of community garden support mechanism. I'm researching, I'm still researching this, so I know there are parks and tourism groups give support to community gardens and offer advice and work with them. When I, when y'all, and some of you came over to the farm, when you did, I showed you the pipeline easement and what we think could be a great community garden from Graham Road several hundred feet back. Dunbar Community Garden in Little Rock is my absolutely wonderful role model. And St. Joseph's in North Little Rock is also a great place. So if you all have not seen both those projects and what they can do for community involvement, please go check them out. I talked to Mike Boone at the Boys and Girls Club. He's very interested in partnering with us. They've started their own little community. I mean, it's tiny, but obviously, we could work with the kids. We could work with the senior center. We can work with the school. The library's interested in working with us. We've got all sorts of community support. And Dunbar is huge. I mean, it's, it's been, I think it started in 1992, so it's been around a long time. But it's got community gardens where people can grow their own things. It's got animals. It's got bees. It's got a farm produce thing where the people who grow can sell theirs or they can bring other stuff in. They've got huge numbers of educational programs, so it's, it's really a great opportunity for community involvement and education. And as Mike was telling me today, some of the kids have never had a plum. I mean, they don't know what a tomato looks like when it's grown, and so that sort of stuff would be really wonderful. Anyway, I'm continuing to research what Little Rock and North Little Rock have done, so I'll keep you all filled in on that. Obviously, we would have to form a nonprofit to work with the city and all the other partners. I'm a lawyer, so I can do that. But we've got so many potential partnerships. And also, I talked to Stephanie, Michelle, sorry, and she said there might be an opportunity to get into the 2025 plan for some of the community development block rent funds for, for public improvement.
Never really finalized.
Anyway, since she's in the, in the process of forming that now, it's a timely thing for us to do. So I'm going to be meeting with them too. So I hope, we don't have to do anything tonight, but I hope you all think about this and how good it could be. We don't have anything like this in the city, so it would be really, really great for the community if we could do that. The other thing I talked about when I was here last time was donating the 38 acres next to the shooting range to the city, and I still would like to do that. I haven't talked to parks lately about whether they would like the whole 38 acres or whether just the buildable 17 would be okay. I'm, I'm open to either one because I can probably sell the back part for turkey hunting. I understand it's very good for that, so, anyway. And then we come to the drainage ditch stuff. So y'all have this big packet, and you know, those of you who came saw these huge ditches, and they're probably bigger than any other place in Jacksonville. And nobody knows they're there because nobody sees the back of the property except me and whoever else I take back there, including the mayor and the, you know, and those of you all who came before. But, and I know the city is short, short-staffed, but the pictures I showed, I can't even get down the drainage ditches now because it hadn't been mowed all year. I can't see where I'm going. There are holes and erosion. The bridges are washed out. It's unsafe. And the thing that concerns me, besides my safety and the people who wander into the property and the squatters, because we have those, we can't get emergency vehicles to the, to the back of the property. There were three drainage ditches, three bridges on the Nixon Delaney Ditch. Two of those are gone. And the low-water bridge that we crossed, if you all came, on the pipeline is, it looks like it's deteriorating to me, and it certainly would not allow access for any emergency vehicles. You couldn't get a fire engine back there. Couldn't even get an ambulance back there. And there's another drainage ditch that was cut by the city sometime. It's just a little channel, but it's deep enough you can't get a vehicle across it. And that culvert area has eroded, so it's only wide enough for a golf cart. I can't even get a truck across it. So there's no access to the back 80 really at all. There are a bunch of ruts that in, in wet times are so deep you can't get anything back there. So all I'm, all I'm asking for is recognize that these have been there since the 60s and formalized in the 80s. It's specifically city maintenance requirement, and it hadn't been taken care of in the last 10 years, really. Two of the ditches are gone. I don't care about rebuilding those. I just want the one that's strong enough to get everybody to the back. And the very back ditch, which is John's Tributary or something, it runs from northeastern to the railroad. That bridge is completely gone, and it's so deep and so steep, you can't even walk, I mean, you can't climb down and get across it, much less any kind of vehicle. I don't think a low-water bridge would work there. I think it would take a plank bridge or a telephone pole. If you could get telephone poles donated, you know, that would be strong enough to do that, that would be great. The safety issue is, is my main concern. I mean, it's my safety, but it's also the safety of the communities. It didn't used to worry me nearly as much, and I really didn't think about getting emergency vehicles to the back. But now subdivisions surround the farm, you know, that weren't there 20 years ago, and the weather has been so erratic. I worry about forest fires, and if we can't get emergency vehicles to the back and we have an 80-acre forest fire that's uncontainable, it can spread all over those subdivisions, and that scares me, so.
Speaking to what Ms. Nixon's talking about, we received this week, she sent us, we got it Monday, documentation from 1980, I guess it was, in 81, where the first documents that we saw, signed by the city agreeing to take care of these ditches and the easements that are there. Then also in, I believe it was 1991, Mayor Swaim and the Chair of the Wastewater Commission, both signed documentation agreeing to specifics on the ditches and who's going to maintain the north side, who's going to maintain the south side. The city will maintain the bridge, so, you know, we are, Ms. Friedman, I believe emailed you the other day and said, so we are, the city is in full agreement to, to take care of these.
And, and we can, I realize that Adam is not here tonight, so we can meet later and come up with a, a plan and a schedule, but I would like it in writing, because we've had everything else in writing for, for years, and I want to be, in 20 years, I want somebody to be able to look back and say, hey, yeah, this is, this is part of the, it's been maintained for, what, 50 years, 60? I mean, the back ditch is 60-plus years. And I realize that nobody looks at it particularly, but it scares me. And that's why, that's why I finally said, hey, we, we really need to do something about this. It's, it's a huge area in the middle of town, and if it's not safe, it's, it's a hazard for the community. I don't care whether y'all build, do the repairs and build it back, or you let me do it and reimburse me. I'm perfectly capable of getting my crews to do that, but, so whatever you want to do.
And that'll be a discussion that we have when Adam.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll figure out the most economical, best way to go.
And it's, it's like the community garden. I'm going to have to come up with a budget and a, you know, a plan of action and do all that. Yes.
Have you been in communication with the city about this, or is this just getting started?
No, I've been, well, I've been actually communicating about the erosion for years.
But we're just receiving the documentation to support?
No, and I sent, I sent most of these documents and a letter in March, and I haven't heard anything back.
So, Ms. Nixon, I did want to address that. I talked to Mayor, and I believe Kevin. The email that you had sent to us in March, I didn't receive. I received pictures that you sent separately, and I think it said something about these are the issues that need to be addressed. I thought this was a meeting that I wasn't privy to, that I was just CC'd on, just to keep in the loop, so I didn't address that. The email that actually had the narrative and the description, we did not receive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was not attached in March. We didn't receive that.
Well, I, I have also called and left messages and gotten no response, so.
The first time you called my office was last week, and I'm.
No, I, no, I've called the mayor's office.
Oh, okay.
And I've, and I've talked to Adam. We've, we've walked this for the last two years. This is not something that has been brought up recently. The, the erosion, I really haven't talked about the bridges so much, but I have talked about the erosion and the holes on the drainage ditches that are unsafe. And I've been doing that for three years. I mean, even, even before this administration came in. But I've worked with every other city engineer, and I've, they've taken care of stuff, and it just hasn't been done, and it gets worse, of course, as erosion does. And the, the low-water bridge undercutting is beginning to concern me. I don't want to fall in. So I don't, I don't want the city mowers to fall in when they go across there, so. Anyway, I've been trying to get this done for a long time. It's not that this is the first time that any, that the mayor or the city engineer know about this.
Yeah, but this is the first time we've actually seen documentation showing it up until now.
I showed it to Adam before. I've, I've showed it to Adam before.
If he's not here this evening.
He's not, he's not here. He's not here. But, I, I mean, the city has been maintaining these ditches for over 60 years, and, and there's been no interest in keeping it up. And I really didn't want to have to come do this, but I wasn't getting anywhere. And I mean, I mean, it hadn't been mowed in 2025. I cannot get, I, I can't get anywhere on the ditches because I can't see where I'm going, and there are holes. I'm going to fall in. And I don't want to either break my golf cart or my leg. So I've been trying to get this taken care of. I didn't want to have to come do this, but I wanted it on the record because I'm sure all of you all who haven't been here for 60 years don't know that the city has taken care of this. And if, if you haven't been to the back of the property, you don't know what's back there, because you can't see it from the street and outside out at night. I mean, you know, nobody's going to pay any attention to it if it's not brought to someone's attention. But the, but the forest fire concern has increased with the weather. Our last two summers have been so dry and so tinderbox. It's, it really disturbs me to think that we've got all this acreage that can't be dealt with. And it's part of the city, so that's just what we should do.
It's, it's going to be addressed.
Okay, and we'll talk about, y'all can do it. We can do it. It doesn't make any difference. I assume you won't want to build the bridges you made me build in the subdivision that cost 100 and some odd thousand dollars each. We won't have to put in box culverts and all of that. Just do something that will, that will carry vehicles so it can be safely taken care of and mow it every once in a while. I mean, the, the 2018 folks, engineers said, we'll just do a work order so somebody walks us every few months and looks at it. And that would be really handy if we could re-institute that sort of maintenance.
2018?
18, uh huh. And it was done for several years, but, you know, COVID changed, COVID changed everything. And I know the city is short-staffed, and we've changed, we've changed city engineers a couple of times. We've changed the makeup. We've changed the responsibilities of the different departments. So we just need to know who's responsible for what and, and take care of it, so.
It'll be addressed.
Okay, and I greatly appreciate you responding now, because I'm, I'm glad we're on the same page and we can get this taken care of. Because it really is, it's, it's a nuisance, and it's, I think it's a safety hazard, so I would like to have this taken care of. So, but meanwhile, also, I hope the community garden can, you know, we can do something. This is positive too, but the community garden would be really great. And that drainage ditch you don't have to fool with, because it's so low, it doesn't get, it hadn't been mowed for a while.
Mayor Anmore.
Yes.
Is there, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two different things that says the city's in charge of maintaining the ditch and the drainage, which I think we're all in agreeance. The city's also in charge of the easements on each side of the ditch, so whatever feet that is, so 15, 20 feet, whatever it says in the old document, is that correct?
Yes, the city, yes, the city is responsible for the easements and the maintaining of the.
So not maintaining, mowing the whole property?
No, not maintaining.
No, just.
The amount of feet is.
Correct.
They're, they're 50 feet.
On each side?
No, 50-foot easements.
Okay, and then my second question for you, Ms. Nixon. I heard you say something about needing to get emergency vehicles into that property, possibly a fire truck. I understand a fire truck, in case of a fire, but is it currently a public property for people to?
No.
To get out there? Well, you mentioned people being out there.
No, they trespass.
Okay, so they'd be people trespassing?
Yeah.
Okay, but, and they could potentially need ambulance service?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I was confused.
And people squat in the woods.
Right, I understand.
And I mean, when we were out there in March, there was somebody living in the back, and, and, you know, there's no way for, for us to get there to confront them. I guess you can come in from the north.
The other side, or the, yeah, the west side.
But I don't know how, you can't get there from the west side either, because there's not a bridge over that drainage ditch. No, that, you're right, from the, from the west side. No, the only, that's north, see, that's north of the west side. You have to come in, I guess you can come.
Come down, it's the lake easement or the city where our drainage ditch is by the railroad tracks.
But that's across the railroad tracks.
You'd have to cross over.
Yeah, so it's.
But that's the most correct way.
It's a real hassle, and it's not through our property.
No, but unfortunately, it is through the city.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But, yeah, it's not public, it's not public property, but there are people who trespass because they think it's a park. And I've put posted signs up, but, you know, people don't pay any attention to that a lot of times. And they're always going to be people who do that, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mrs. Nixon, going back to the community garden, once you have completed your research, I think it would be good to come back and share what you find and provide some updates to see how we can work together.
And we'll work with Michelle too, for the, to see what we can do with her plan, because that would be really great. And we'll work with Michelle too, for the, to see what we can do with her plan, 'cause that would be really great if we could use some of that. I, you know, it, it depends on how big you wanna go, but it would require fencing, oh, one of the things the city could do, though, is put a water meter on Graham Road, there's no water over there right now, and there's no electrical. But we'd have to fence it because, one, for safety, but also 'cause we have deer, and they would eat everything, so, a tall fence.
The last thing, I look forward to hearing the updates on the acres as well, 'cause we do have some that are interested in knowing how that will go with the city as far as you donating those acres and us being able to build on, on that near the.
Well, we haven't, city hadn't gotten an appraisal, have they, so, so I can, I've, I've got somebody that can do an appraisal on that, and I think I will get an appraisal of the whole, but we may split it into those two parcels and see, 'cause I know Mark Perry's, he, he hunts back there, and he's interested in me not giving all of it to the city, so.
Thank you so much for your time.
I really, I appreciate you all listening to this, and I hope you'll be, I hope you'll be supportive of the, the community garden and the donation, but thank you so much for agreeing to, to maintain this and repair what hasn't been done for quite a while. I know, I know everybody's short-staffed, and we're behind because we've lost so much time during COVID, so, but it's a safety thing, so thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Nixon.
I'll come back to my work.
Yes, it would be great.
Uh, any old or new business?
Mayor, I have old business?
Yes, sir.
Just a question, and if, if I'm in the wrong place, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know we're, we're not meeting the rest of the month, and I know that we have an ordinance that's gonna be passed, I think June twenty-one was that fence ordinance that we did approve by majority vote at our last meeting. And, you know, it's thankfully to our communications director that was kinda put out there on a, on the platform that, that page uses in, you know, I had many constituents call me after that ordinance, just, you know, explaining their concerns about that ordinance, and whoever was involved in putting that ordinance together, I think, thank you for your time and your hard work and dedication to that. But I just wanna make sure that we as a group are still comfortable with moving forward with that ordinance, and I, and I'm only speaking on two things, I would, there was a lot of things in that ordinance that I think were, were good, and I think very beneficial to the city, such as, you know, you don't, I don't think anyone should be able to just put up a makeshift fence, you know, what, what they thinks a makeshift, or a pallet, or however they do. But the two things I'm concerned about is, we're charging our citizens for something on their private property, which I do know there are things that are, that are also doing that, but when I think of a fence, I think of two things, and that's privacy and security. And there are some residents where a six-foot fence is not, does, does not, does not provide privacy and/or security, depending on way, depending on how that home is laid out and how, you know, it could sit. And so I just wanna make sure that, since we're not meeting again, that we as collectively here, everyone sitting here is, is still okay with that, because essentially, once that ordinance passes, someone could put up a fence thinking that they can do whatever they want to in their own property, and code enforcement could come in and say, no, sorry, gotta take it down. And I just wanna make sure that we collectively are, are okay with that, I know, six foot's pretty standard, but you could live on an incline and not have any privacy, and that's, I, I think every homeowner or resident should be entitled, entitled to that, on, on that note. There are lots of things in that ordinance that I think are very beneficial to the city, but that note, I think, I, I don't, I, I'm a little, I'm hesitant about that, and that was my, my reason for voting no at the last meeting, and so if anybody has any thoughts or concerns before, 'cause I know we're not meeting the rest of the month before this goes into action.
I do, I have several that have reached out to me about the same as well, and I want to say we may have more than that, considering that the code that that thirty days is attached to was updated with our policy and procedures, if that's correct, it may not go into effect on that date, because once that code was updated, and Madam Clerk, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we'll have additional time there to, to think through that. It may not be the thirty days since the code was updated at voids, what was there previously, and we're back to the ninety, is that correct?
It is correct.
So, once that policy and procedure was updated, we no longer have that thirty days, so it'll be ninety, ninety-one days, or whichever one it is, so you may have more time.
Does anybody have more time?
Yes, I'm not, just to address your point about people who have extenuating circumstances where a six-foot fence wouldn't suffice, for whatever reason, I think that's just kind of the standard, so we have a baseline for the city, but if people do have those extenuating circumstances, they're able to come to the city and explain that.
Okay.
It's not just an outright denial, it's just to kind of prevent, to create some consistency within the community, but people will still be allowed, if they have, you know, a sharp incline, they'll still be allowed to do a tall fence.
Okay.
They just have to get approval for that.
Permission.
Yeah, exactly.
But rightfully, if they do put something up that's beyond that six foot, they could potentially be told to take it down, the way it stands now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Moss, did you have something, or are you okay?
No.
Okay. Again, those of you who had a hand in putting that together, thank you, 'cause it is beneficial to the city, parts of that ordinance, so, so thank you.
Any other comments or old business? If not, you'll notice in your packets, there was a sheet provided for the June announcements for Parks and Rec, they are going to, Marlo's gonna start submitting that, and to y'all, so you'll have that every month, so you can see what's going on as a, as an announcement for y'all, so make sure you pay attention to that. And at this point in time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh move.
We're done, thank you.